I'll call the meeting to order of the Glencoe Silver Lake School Board for July 12th, 2021. Do you want to join me in for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don, will you please take your call?
Janice? Bud?
Here.
John?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
Emily, I'm here.
Thank you. We will start the meeting by approving the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Clark. Second by John. To approve the agenda, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Announcements. Next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, August 9th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the GSL High School Community Room 443, 444. Acknowledgements. Chris, do we have any acknowledgements?
You know, I am, I am going to have one acknowledgement here, and she's not going to like this, and neither will Tricia, but I'm going to acknowledge Michelle Sander and her work with our COVID esser gears, you name it, dollars. They are a lot to deal with, and she and her staff, with Tricia and the rest of the ladies in the office are doing an outstanding job. And so I think it's important and proper for us to recognize and say thank you. So, good job, and keep up the good work, because I know it's just beginning.
Let's get through on it, and we'll see how well we get.
Oh, I can do that during my report. Yeah, I have that in my report.
Any other acknowledgements? This time, public input relating to the agenda, once. Public input relating to the agenda, twice, and the third time, no public input. Reports and presentations, we have none at this time. Administrative committee reports, this is business manager report.
Yep, I just wanted to give you a quick update on some of our projects that we've got going on around our facilities that you're probably aware of, if you've been watching around our buildings. The fieldhouse windows have been installed. Most of that is complete. I think they might have a little touch-up paint, that kind of thing to do yet, but for the most part, those windows are all done. We've received a lot of great compliments on the natural light now coming into that facility. So if you haven't seen it yet, take a peek inside the facility and speak to some of the walkers that use it. They're really enjoying that. So that project is about completed. The high school bathrooms here on the north end by the egg hallway are getting there. The fixtures are in, the partitions are in, the paint is on. The mirrors have to go up yet, and then some touch-up things, but it's a night and day difference between the old bathrooms and getting those new bathrooms modernized with the new vanity and fixtures in there. The egg hallway tile has been completed. It got completed over the weekend. In fact, it's been an awfully nice improvement as well. So that now finishes the high school, replacing all the old tile with the new tile. So that, that just finishes it off. It just looks really nice the way it blends into that hallway. The fax room, the new tile that went down on that floor is all done. There's a little bit of cove basting that they have to finish yet, otherwise that is looking really, really nice also. I think the high school carpets, the couple of rooms that we're doing will be going next week. The auditorium lights in the high school are done. The electrician is finishing up some work with them. And then the training on the council for those lights will happen in August. We want to wait till we have a couple of staff back around available so they can be trained as well from the company on how to use those new, the new light council. Up at Lakeside, the cafeteria, the only thing left in there is the base going around there. That floor turned out beautiful in that area. And we now painted, if you're familiar with that space up there, there is built-in cafeteria tables that don't get used anymore for eating. They don't pull them down for eat. They get used once in a while if they need space for like science fair, and even then they haven't been using them. It costs quite a bit to take them out. They were a bright orange that really stuck out in that wall. They've now been painted the same wall color, so they kind of blend in, and it looks really, really nice. So a huge improvement there. The bathroom remodel project is about 60% done, so they're going on that. The painting is done, the ceiling is done. Now the fixtures are going in. Oh, the base is left in the cafeteria too to finish up. The classrooms, the eight classrooms that we're doing are about 80% finished. They'll be finishing those up shortly. The electrician has been in there. The fire sprinklers have been adjusted, and they're starting to put the new tile back in. And then we have some carpet yet. That'll happen this week up at Lakeside. So that's kind of a quick overview of where we're at in the projects, except the canopy at the high school. If anybody drove by the front of the building today, we had a big boom, and the canopy is down, and they're cleaning that up. And they will get started next week on the new canopy. So that was, I think it was a good choice that we made to get that canopy out of there. We were to the point where, I'm glad we pulled it down instead of it coming down that way. So that's, that's going to be a fun project to watch come along. Quick update on legislative. I know I shared with you what MSBA had put out regarding the legislative session. I haven't had time to study the whole package yet, and I don't think Chris or I, I know I haven't, we haven't seen any workshops or webinars yet regarding the legislative summary. I think there's, the attorneys, they have to go through everything, and then before they present it to school officials as far as what the whole package means. As far as us, you know, we look at what's the dollars, what's the effect for GSL. The first year of the two-year biennium, 2.45% increase on the formula allowance, and the second year is 2%. So what that means is right now, the formula allowance that we get per student is at $6,567. That will jump then to $6,728 the first year, and the second year will move to $6,863. So I think everybody was fairly surprised about how that ended up when we were told, you know, don't go over that 1% projection. So there's a perfect example of right now why we do budget revisions, because a month ago, we approved this year's budget at a 1% formula increase, which is being conservative. So I'll start working on new numbers. But what that kind of relates to us for right now, based on 1,500 students, is where we kind of hover. For next year, it'll be an increase of about 241,000. So what that does, when I look at that, our loss of basic skills revenue for this next year was about 250,000. And that had to do with not as many families filled out the educational benefit form, the free and reduced form that they filled out, because why fill it out when everybody's getting free meals? We're going to run into that same problem again this next year. So we lost now for this year, like I said, about 250,000. So that increase of 2.45% kind of gets us back to neutral with what we lost on that. Now, we know we're using our SR2 dollars to kind of get us through next year, so we didn't have to make any reductions. You know, it's going to keep our budget stable. So once we get all those budget revisions, then we'll see how everything plays out. But at this point, I won't be jumping on those budget revisions. We'll get through audit and then see what our enrollment numbers come in at in September, then we'll start looking at how that really impacts us. We did end the year, Tricia submitted her last MARS, not her last MARS, but kind of the end-of-the-year MARS report. We ended the year at 1,506 students. The budget revision for this year, I had at 1,490. I knew it was going to be a little bit higher based on those students that come and go, and come and go during the year. So you always hope you're a little bit under, and it comes in higher. So we're up a few students, so that'll help as we work through the final budget numbers in our audits. So we had our preliminary audit two days last week. Those were done remotely. And now they will be in-house the week of August 2nd, and it sounds like they're going to be onsite for three days, and then two, two days remote working on that. So right now, there's about 152 budget, or audit requests out on their portal for us to start submitting data to. So the office staff is busy working on their, their piece of that audit. Questions? Okay, thank you. My other items are on the agenda.
Thanks, Michelle. I did walk around today too, and I looked at the whole tile. I came in and did a little, little visit when I heard the canopy was going down, and walked down that high school hallway, and that does look like a finished project now. Looks really nice. Looks at the bathrooms there, their fixtures are going in, and just a nice improvement to see it getting done. And, you know, the contractor said the tiles were going to be hard to find, and we kind of found that out now as they're finishing up that they probably weren't going to be able to get anymore. So good that that's taken care of. I took a walk with Mr. Monchow. We went up and looked at the windows, and he said he's got a lot of compliments on those. They really liked that extra lighting coming in, so that's nice to see that project get almost completed. Like I said, they got a little touch-up yet, but it looks really nice. And the canopy, yes, I did talk to Mr. Politica there while he was pounding around on it, and it was down on the ground, and I went and looked at it, and he looked at it too and said, wasn't being held up that much anymore. So it's a good thing that we did what we did there. So anyway, nice to see the projects moving forward. Chris?
Thank you, and good evening. Just a couple of things. Obviously, getting ready for the upcoming school year, and working together, working with the administrative staff and putting together our workshop schedule. One of the things that we're going to be doing this year on August 30th, now this is going to be kind of a bonus day where staff are able to come in if they can, and it's going to be our GSL Learning Academy, and we're going to be able to have different training sessions for all of our staff to redo their licensure with the required things, such as literacy, the PBIS, the mental health, those types of things. And so we're putting together something that I think the staff is going to appreciate, and that's going to be on August 31st. And then on August 31st, we're working with the Glencoe Police Department and our Sheriff's Department to go through a crisis drill, and so we're going to be able to go through kind of a taint of top walkthrough of some crisis situations. And that's going to happen along with getting some training with seizure smart, so that our school will be a seizure smart school. And if you've noticed, that there was some legislative information about that, so we're kind of ahead of the game with that area of doing that. And then also lined up, just ahead, we'll give you more information on this later, but just lined up a poverty simulation. This was something that we were planning on doing a few years ago, or like about a year and a half ago until COVID kind of stepped in, but we're going to be able to work and put in a poverty simulation with our staff. And it's a really good training exercise that's going to be happening on November 3. And again, in that case, it's a little closer. We will let you, we'll let you know about that. In terms of the upcoming school year, it's, you know, we still have our safe school, you know, return to school plan that's on the website, explicit data, information from our public about that. And, you know, our, our school year will be quote-unquote "back to normal" in terms of, you know, what you would think of it as. We're still going to social distance where you can, masks are not required to come back to school, you know, on that aspect, you know, but you're still going to have some of the safety requirements, because, you know, we're still in a pandemic, is what people tell you. Obviously, we're in a much better place than we were a year ago, sitting here, and we're going to have, you know, in-person learning every single day with the plan, and that's what's going to continue to move forward. We'll continue to send those updates to our families. So looking forward to that. Official start of school, and I know we'll talk about this next month, but official start of school, September 7th, will be 7th through 12th graders, and then on September 8th, will be our K through 6th grade. Okay? And then finally, Marie Stewie, we learned that she just went to nationals along with a couple of the teens, and they all, the kids did all very, very well, but Marie did, you know, from my understanding, 13th out of almost 16, or over 1,600 kids, think about that for a second, and from my understanding, she missed three times and took 13th. What more did you have to do? But that's pretty amazing. So congratulations to her and to all the people that participated in her contribution.
Thank you.
I just have a question about, you know, returning back to normal through the school year. The only question that I have is before, if a student were to get sick and be sent home, then the whole class would be sent home? Are we going to do anything like that?
We're able to be able to go through that process, you know, case by case still, but as a general rule, that's not going to be happening. There's still, you know, close contact situations, but in terms of, of, you know, kind of that umbrella rule that says, you know, from the, from the state saying this is what you should be doing, we now have a little more control over that, and that's not going to happen. We're going to, but the student would need to be home. If they're, if they're sick, just like in any illness that they would have, we would ask them to stay home.
Will the student be required to get a COVID test before returning, or do they have to stay home for the 14 days?
I don't know that specifically for that answer, but I don't believe you're going to need to have that proof. Those are things that we still have to work out, depending on, you know, what that safe school, you know, some of those answers that we're having. But from my information, we're back to normal. When somebody has those things, you know, that's a, that's a good question. They're going to be told that they're going to need to stay home for 10 days if they get COVID. You know, if they get COVID in November, let's say, they're going to have to stay home for the 10 days, unless there's some wholehearted changes in the, but when we're dealing with those situations, we will be dealing with those situations on a case-by-case basis, rather than this blanket rule that says this is what's going to happen. And I think that's going to be a lot better for everybody.
Good to know. And I'm sure the public is going to want to know the specifics of it, because it's, it's sometime, I know it's been very hard for some parents, you know, like you're, I mean, kids go through allergies and, you know, all that other kind of stuff, and it's like, well, do I send them home? Do I go get a COVID test? What do I do? And it's, it's better to know that, you know, still not, don't be afraid to keep them home. If they're sick, they're not going to, you know, they possibly won't be missing a whole 10 days. You know, if they're sick, they do need to stay home. And if you feel that they need the COVID test, then go get the COVID test.
One of the things in our superintendent updates that just was released from MDE about that topic, and their answer to us was, we are going to get you more information on the specifics of what is happening. So we're waiting to see specifically, but again, we'll be dealing with that stuff on a case-by-case basis. And it's my hope that, you know, kids are back in school regularly, but obviously, if you're sick, you want to stay home, get well, and then let's get you back to school.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Chris? Otherwise, are there any committee reports? Yeah, the only, I was just going to mention, we did start negotiations with the union, and we had our first meeting last Wednesday morning, and we have our next meeting coming up on this one, it's 14.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM, yep. Talked some language items and a little bit of financials, and we're just, just we'll be meeting again and talk more. At this time, approve the consent agenda, action item, closure number one, motion. Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? Second by John. I have a second by John. To approve the consent agenda, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Old business. No on business at this time. Item A, cyber insurance, action item. Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sander recommend accepting a quote from EMC Insurance Company to provide cyber insurance coverage for the 2021, '22 school year. Cyber solutions package includes data comprehensive package and network security with a limit of $500,000. Network security reliability and cyber coverage for '20, '21 was $4,438, and '21, '22 was $2,096. I think I'll ask for a motion, and then we'll, you got a motion?
So moved.
Motion by, by John, second by Clark. Michelle, do you have any more information on it?
Just basically summarizing what you read, Jason, we were able to obtain a little bit of a policy. I think that gets us a little coverage, a little sense of security. You know, the difference in the premium, last year, our policy was at 1.5 million, and it's only at 500,000, but I think that does give us a little bit. I think it's well worth the investment to have that, just because of all the cyber attacks that are out there, everything that's going on in that world of cyber, this cyber world. So I would recommend taking this and what we, you know, as far as what we can get, and then we'll continue to work on more and watch, watch for companies and see what they're going to start offering. So very, very limited of who's going to even offer these packages. So it's something we'll, we'll keep working on, and I know our agent will keep working on it, and we've got the COOP also looking at some things. So it's a, it's going to be an ongoing thing, but at least we're getting a little bit of a coverage.
Excuse me, this was old business for item A also. And for that, $4,438, is that for the '21, '22 year?
That was the year we just finished, yeah.
That was the year we just finished.
Yeah, so that was that, the 1.5 million coverage we had, and now our coverage drops to 500,000. That's why the premium.
The new cost for this year. So this will be a yearly thing. We'll have to see what happens next year.
Yep, we'll continue to watch, yep.
All right, so I have a motion by John, second by Clark, to approve cyber insurance as presented. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. New business. Item A, Minnesota State High School League membership, action item, enclosure number two. Annually, the school board must act to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League. The board is required to review the Why We Play training video and Code of Conduct statement. The signature is the superintendent and the clerk of the school board affirm such compliance. It is the recommendation of the superintendent that the Minnesota State High School League membership be approved for the '21, '22 school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? I'll make that second. To approve the membership in the Minnesota State High School League for '21, '22 school year. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Item B, approval of student handbooks, action item, enclosure number three and four. Included with the school board packets are parent-student handbooks for the '21, '22 school year for the board review. Two handbooks have been repaired, one for the elementary students and one for secondary students. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the handbooks. Do I have a motion? Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. To approve the parent-student handbooks for '21, '22 school year. Any questions? Comments?
We do have Mr. Fosse here, if you wanted to, well, he's here to talk about the verbal credits, but if there's any questions that you have on the handbooks, you can certainly reach out to him.
Okay, hearing none. I have a motion by Clark, second by John, to approve parent-student handbooks for '21, '22 school year. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, approval of faculty handbooks, action item, enclosures number five, six, and seven. Included with the school board packets are faculty handbooks for the '21, '22 school year for the board review. Three handbooks have been repaired, one for the elementary staff, one for the secondary staff, and one for the district staff. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the handbooks. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Clark. To approve the staff handbooks for the '21, '22 school year. Do I have any question? Hearing none. I have a motion by, Alicia, second by Clark, to approve the staff handbooks for '21, '22 school year. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, high school graduation credits, information only. Mr. Fosse?
So one of the things that I've looked at since I've come here, and it's, it's hard to believe that this has been three years now, but is the, the adjustment of our required credits for graduation from Glencoe Silver Lake Senior High School. And I know I've sent out a little bit of information in the past and spoke to some of you individually about this, but I believe it was probably 15 years ago, Mr. Sanju, where
Yep. Before I started with the payment stage.
GSL used to run a semester schedule, which means they had just first semester, second semester, and that was the end of the school year. And about 15 years ago, they switched that and moved to a trimester schedule. And I believe this change, again, this predated me and predated Mr. Sanju, but I believe this change was very abrupt. I also think that it probably had to do, due to some budgetary constraints at the time. When they decided to make that change, they didn't look at how going from a semester schedule to a trimester schedule affected the amount of credits that a student could earn while at GSL. So 15 years ago, it was 30 credits to graduate from GSL, and it is still 30 credits to graduate from GSL. And the issue that we were running into with that was the amount of courses that a student could fail and still graduate from school here at Glencoe Silver Lake. And specifically, the issue we were running into is we would have some of our upperclassmen taking elective courses their senior year and going, I'm not going to try because I don't need this course to graduate. I've already met my requirements. I just need to pass my course, which would be social studies, a science, and a math at that level. And, and we were having senioritis at a higher level than usual would be happening. So one of the things that we did is I put together a graduation credit committee to look at this change and, and say, okay, here's the history, here's why we are where we are. What do we want to do about it? And some of the steps that we did is I reached out to area schools and asked a few questions. I asked them if they're on a semester or trimester schedule. I asked them how many hours or periods they had in a day. I asked them how much each class was worth per credit. Then I asked them how many credits it's possible for a student to earn, and how many credits are required for a student to earn from their school. I heard back, and I spoke to individuals from Litchfield, Jordan, Waconia, Rockford, New Orleans, Spicer, and Hutchinson. And basically, what it came out to be is those schools allowed a failure rate of anywhere between four classes, all the way up to eight classes, and still being able to graduate from their respective institutions. So our 12th-class failure rate is, is much higher than where it should have been. From there, it moved into a discussion with, with the committee that I put together, and that committee, thankfully, they probably won't be happy that I bring them up here, but Jared Saunders, Mike Haves, Nicole Ross, Cam, Sarah Beckman, Cheryl Templin, Sue Magnuson, and Pat Hiltner, and Dan Saboto were all in a committee that I put together to look at this information to make some adjustments. And one of the things that came up in that adjustment, and this is a minor part of what I'm talking about right now, but I do want to note it, GSL offers a half a credit per course. That causes a lot of issues when we have students transfer in from other schools. It also specifically causes a lot of issues with our students that we share with the Waconia Area Learning Center. And the reason it causes issues is because most schools award a full credit per class as opposed to a half credit. So when we have an incoming transcript, Cheryl and Sue in our counseling department need to kind of do the calculations on what does that calculate to. And oftentimes, it's kind of unfair to a student that transfers in as well, because the calculation doesn't come directly across, so they end up needing like .25 credits of an English. Well, we don't offer a .25 English credit course, so they're taking a whole trimester of an English to earn the credit that they would need to graduate from our school. So not only did this committee look at how many credits should we have for graduation, but also what does it look like if we move from a half a credit awarded to one full credit per each class to help with that transition? And what we came up with was if we moved to a full credit, each student would be able to earn 72 credits at the end of their high school year on a non-overload schedule, which means that they still have a study hall every trimester that they're in high school. They'd be able to earn 72 credits by the end of their senior year. And we've looked at, and what I would like to propose to you, for you guys as the board to talk about, and we can move on to the next step in August, is I'd like to recommend that 66 credits be required for graduation. That's an addition of six additional courses that students need to pass from GSL. The next question that would come up is where do you add those credits? So we have English, math, science, social studies. Where do we add those credits? And the answer that I've come up with, and again, the proposal that the group here that I spoke about earlier came up with was we would add them into our elective courses. So they would need six additional elective courses, which could fall anywhere from your agriculture classes to your industrial tech, art, facts, business, any one of those could come for electives. Also, we have elective offerings in social studies with some of our history through media is a course that we offer, which would be elective. We have elective coursework in our English department as well that students could take. So the six additional courses, the six additional credits made most sense to be in elective, because then it gives our students the ability to decide, hey, this is a course I really have an interest in, this is something that I want to take, and now it's meaningful, because those credits truly are going to work towards graduation. So I apologize. So I apologize because that was a whole bunch of information in about seven minutes for you guys, um, and something that we've been talking about as a group and a committee here for several months. But what questions do you have immediately for me?
Of those schools that you were in contact with, how many were semester-based and how many were trimester-based?
They were pretty much split 50/50.
Did you see much of a difference in those number of credits that were trimester-based compared to semester-based?
No, I mean, when, when I look at this, so, um, Jordan runs on a semester. So Jordan, uh, they let me know that they can earn 28 credits at the end of their, their senior year. So it's because they're semester and they offer half credit. But if you look at Waconia, Waconia's trimester, they offer full credit, um, and they're at 60 is what you can earn at the end of that. So it, it really, it kind of depends on which specific class you look at. Um, but between semester and trimester, I would say it's, you know, I can, I can tell you right here, one, two, three, four of them were semester and four of them were trimester. So-
Because, I mean, you know, back 15 years ago, one of the discussion points was the trimester thing is an advantage because kids get more classes, they get more electives, those kind of things. So, but you could also look at it, you have more opportunity to fail classes if you're taking more, you know, so that might be a reason why you say, okay, well, we have 12 that you potentially could fail where somebody else has six. Or if you're taking more classes, especially some of your students that have a more challenge academically or, or for various reasons, they have a higher opportunity to fail more classes too. So, I mean, you got to take that into account a little bit as well. But I, I'm not opposed to doing anything here, Matt. Personally, I appreciate you looking at this because what worked 15 years ago or 20 years ago may not be relevant today, and so it's good you're looking at it.
So in the end, we wanted to present this because it's a change and because it's something that is dealing with credits, um, we wanted to present to you guys tonight and then bring it back to you next month, uh, for approval of, of this change. And then if you have any questions, and we'll continue to look at the process and provide you information. But at least we now have a month to be able to go through it and, and continue to look at it if there is anything. What are we missing? You know, with this change like this, you kind of sometimes go, oh, I think we're catching everything, I think we're thinking of most things. But there may be things that come up, um, and that buys us, uh, you know, some time for us to, um, see if there is anything that we're ever missing. And so, uh, we're just going to present this for you tonight and then we'll bring it back in August. The other thing that I want to add to this too, um, for you guys to consider, and obviously if you have any questions between now and August, email, call, stop in, whatever works best, but, um, we would not implement this change of requiring 66 credits to graduation, um, until our incoming freshmen are seniors. So any student who is going to be a senior next year, a junior next year, or a sophomore next year, their credit requirements are going to be the same as what it has been historically. So this change would be grandfathered in so that anybody that's already been at the high school level isn't going to be penalized for information that they weren't given when they started their high school career.
How, how much student input did you get on this? Did you connect with any students at all?
I have not talked to students about this change yet.
You know, I mean, our student government wasn't real active last year, obviously, but I, I just, I, I think that would be something that would be reasonable, either, either seniors graduate this year or, or certainly some upperclassmen. I think you should at least run that by them. I'd feel a little bit better having, uh, some student support for that as well.
That's certainly something I can, I can do and I can report back to you guys and let you know what I found. Some of the things, uh, that I had in very informal conversations with students, um, I haven't had a, a sit down, hey, here's what we want to do, you tell me. But I appreciate the, the suggestion and I'll certainly get student council here together to talk about that. One of the other things that is kind of going to be embedded with this, and, and this is something for the, the board to be aware of if this is a change we go down with, but I want to incentivize, um, some of our students who school really isn't their favorite place to be. And, and what I mean by that is we have students here that are great workers, um, but just struggle in, in some mainstream English courses. And what we've done at, at GSL historically is we've offered, um, one hour of work-based learning in the past. And some of the things that we've looked at with this committee, and, and nothing's been finalized here, but just kind of talking with you guys here is if we make this change to incentivize it, when I speak to the freshmen, when they come in, if this, we do of, hey, yep, you guys are going to be held to a little bit higher standard, but here's what this also means for you when you get to be a junior or a senior. If you're on track for graduation, we're going to open up a little bit of what our work-based learning is. So instead of going to work, um, at 2:30 until 3:15 and get any credit for that, um, it may be two hours, it may be three hours that you can leave work, uh, leave school, go to work and earn high school credit for it. Um, the other thing that I would be looking at doing is potentially having students start later, start third hour or fourth hour. Um, the first year I was principal here, I had conversations, um, with Playa Woodworking about, um, if there were kids that could work a morning shift and come into work at 10 or 11 a.m. because they just had a, a huge need for, um, employees. And, uh, one of the things that, that COVID has not helped is the, the shortage of employees. So, um, I think that's something that, again, I'm just giving you guys a heads up now that I would be looking at if this would be approved. Um, and then working out with the community as well of, hey, how can we work together as a school and partner with you guys to help get students here that can, can fill a need for you, but also fill a need for us, for kids that, that are looking for something that maybe is outside of the educational classroom too, if they've earned it and if they're on track?
Thank you, Principal Foss. So how would the, uh, the agenda item read? You know, we, we read, we're going from E72 to 66, or how, how would that be when it comes to how we write that, Michelle, again, or Matt? Basically, we would talk about what we're going from to what we're going to go to?
I think we need to talk about going from a half a credit to a full credit-
Full credit system?
For, um, for, um, each class awarded. And then, uh, it would just be a language change to 66 credits required to graduate.
Okay.
And, and remember, when we're saying a half a credit, if, we're talking for the, you know, a whole credit is the year, is the class.
Yeah, it's the class, okay.
Or each, each credit is a tri, right? So like a whole year class, this year is 1.5 credits, next year will be worth three credits. It'll be almost the same length of time. Yep. It makes the calculation of math on the transcript easier. That, that's a, that's really not a policy change, anything, it's just-
Right.
It's changing a subjective number from one half to one. The, the big change here would be going from, on, on that scale, if, if we kept our current graduation status requirement the same, and we moved from half a credit to one credit, um, we would require kids to have 60 credits to graduate from high school. The significant change here that we're talking about is moving from the 60 required to graduate to 66 required to graduate. And I think we can do that within our budget, and I think it's what's best for our students. And, and being able to have the high school get some flexibility to be able to do some things, I think is, is an advantage. And like he said, this is a change for this year's freshman. And we're not doing this change for sophomores, juniors, and seniors. They, they've already had a year at high school. Um, and so over the course of four years, you would then eventually have that change implemented and be able to just kind of stay here from one year to the next. I appreciate them looking into it. I, I appreciate them. We've had this conversation for quite some time about, you know, how can we make this better? And the committee did a really good job of, um, put their heads together and put some time into this.
This, even earlier, this evening, Policy Committee meeting at, at four board meeting, we also had a discussion on this. So we are going to have to be implementing to the policy, they're changing the policy, and that will be, be looked at by you all next month also from recommendations. I mean, we talked about it a little bit tonight, it's going to be going back to the admitting or cabinet, or they're going to review it, um, and then come back to us and give us the recommendations, what's how we're going to, we would change the policy also. So Michelle, I just have a question. When we talk about FTEs, so if we're going to require more classes, I mean, are we doing this with our existing FTEs or are we looking down the road here and saying we're going to have to have, you know, X amount of FTEs more at the 912 level?
No.
Have this. So it's going to be cost neutral, you're telling me?
This will be cost neutral. You'll have more kids in class potentially, you know, but-
So it just makes it more likely that some of these classes that are not held because they don't have the minimum number of students actually may go on? So I know we got some teachers that have taught a class in two, three, four years because they haven't had enough students sign up for it.
Well, and that's, that, that's the whole jigsaw puzzle of, of a student-based system, which I think is still a good thing to do. Um, but that's where these guys have to kind of go back and start plugging things in and, and running classes, you know, that, that are, that have enough interest. But there may even be a few classes that don't get run because of whether it's overload or that type of stuff because the FTE may count and they go up. And so then they have to get put into other classes. And so there, there may be increased class sizes to some of the things, but the whole goal here is to give kids more opportunities, but at the same time, not automatically increasing our FTE count because we do have a budget that we need to, to follow through on. Um, and, and we talked about this whole change and we're doing that, that was one of the things, like, okay, well, you know, I, I love that you're looking into this, but we also need to, to make sure that we're mindful of the budget, you know, we're all on the same page about. That was one of the reasons too, um, when we talked about this, these additional six credits needed for graduation, the proposal of making them all elective credits because now the students can decide and it can be dispersed and spread out between, you know, five, six, seven different departments. So it's not just one department inherently and influx of students that would cause your overload or an additional half FTE or something like that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Principal Foss. Item E, approve long-term facilities maintenance plan. Action item enclosure number eight. A 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan, LTFM, must be approved by the board by July 31, 2021. The LTFM plan needs to be approved yearly and submitted to MDE for approval before it can be included with the preliminary levy. The plan has been reviewed by the Facilities Committee Directors, Elsting and Lindeman, Superintendent Sanju, and Business Manager Sander, um, and they recommend approval of the plan. A roll call vote will be taken. Do I have a motion?
Vote.
Motion by Alicia, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. To adopt resolution, to adopt the resolution adopting the long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan. Any comments or questions?
Michelle, you want to talk a little bit about-
I can go through it, yeah. Unless you just want to vote, that's fine too.
No.
The long-term facilities maintenance has been around a number of years, so it's nothing new. The reason we have to have it approved, um, by this board meeting is because it has to be done by July 31st. And the reason the state requires this, um, is because there's a levy component that goes with this. If we don't approve it, we don't get levy authority. So that's why it's very important that we meet the guidelines. So the first step in, um, in this process is to look at our facility projects, and this is what I work with, with, um, Jason and Jamie on, and Chris and Brady and whatever. We see something, put this on our list. People come back from Milwaukee, put this on our list, you know. Constantly you hear us talking about our, our facilities maintenance list that we have, and it's ongoing and never-ending. So we work on that and, you know, we get in roughly between, you know, about $600,000 a year between levy and aid in our long-term facilities maintenance, and we use every dollar every year. And we'll probably end a little bit in the negative again this year, which is okay, you'll hear that in the audit, because of summer projects and timing. You know, some things that were really happening fast in June, we got billed for, and I was planning on paying for that in July. That doesn't matter, that's an okay thing because we know we've got the money coming in. So we take a look at that list, and then I do the revenue spreadsheet that goes along with that, and that's basically calculated by the Minnesota Department of Education. It's a formula, you get $380 per pupil, and that's calculating out your revenue. And then you take your revenue and out of your long-term facilities maintenance, you have to account for your health and safety items that have to be done. So if you have had, had anything that's been ordered by a Department of Health, by the, uh, the fire marshal, like the, the wrestling room paddings that were finished back in June, that was a fire marshal order, we had to do those, that gets paid for out of long-term facilities maintenance, the health and safety portion of that. So we make sure we account for those health and safety items, all our regular health and safety items that we do during the year. And the rest of it, we just break it out into the categories that those projects fall into, whether it's a site improvement, uh, building envelope improvement, electrical, mechanical plumbing, or just, um, just interior improvements. So we plug those dollars in, out for a 10-year plan, um, and submit it to the state. Now, our project list doesn't go out 10 years, we go out two or three years of things that we've got scheduled to happen each of those years, um, because we know that project list changes every year. But we just make sure we account for all $600,000, uh, spending that money every year. You know, if you have a larger project that you know you want to build that fund balance up a little bit to, to, to make sure you can make that project happen, that would be another thing that we would look at it. At this point, we don't have any big projects that we're trying to build up that money. We've just got a lot of little projects that we like taking care of. So as far as this year's project list, we've pretty much have all our money accounted for with everything that's getting done, um, this summer yet. And then with a little less than $100,000 left to carry us into next year for some of those things that, that come up and to get us through to next June. So I think we do a really good job on identifying those projects, prioritizing those projects, um, and using the money, uh, the way it's intended to take care of facilities.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none. I have a motion by Alicia, seconded by John, to adopt the resolution adopting the LTFM 10-year plan. A roll call vote?
Clark, for or against?
For.
John, for or against? Jason?
For.
Alicia?
For.
And Don, for?
Motion passes. Five, yes, one, absent. Item F, award fuel bids. Action item enclosure number nine. Two sealed fuel bids were received on July 6th. Glencoe Coop Association with a discount of .06 at the pump, price per gallon for diesel and for gas. QuickTrip with a discount of .15 per pump at the pump, price per gallon for diesel, and .08 at the pump price per gallon for gas. It is recommendation Superintendent Sanju, Business Manager Sander, to accept the bids for gas and diesel from Glencoe Coop from July, from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So-
Motion by John, do I have a second? I'll make that second. To approve the bids for gas and diesel for Glencoe Coop. You got anything more on that?
Yeah, I want to provide you a little bit of information because I know as you look at the information and the recommendation, it looks a little deceiving. Yeah, it's not accurate, right. So if you looked at, uh, had a chance to look at your closure that went along with that, uh, that spreadsheet that we put together always, you'll see on there that we put the pump price, and what I do is the day that the bids come in, uh, again, they're sealed bids, they come in in June, then I go and take a look at what the pump price is at both of those, um, those stations. And again, we only have the two bids this year. So for example, Senex, the pump price on that day was $2.91. The discount off the pump price is six cents, which leaves the price per gallon at $2.85. If you look at QuickTrip, their pump price was $2.99, eight cents off the pump price, which leaves the price per gallon at $2.91. For diesel, um, Senex was at 3.11 for the pump price, six cents off the pump price leaves you at 3.05. And QuickTrip, the pump price was $3.19, 15 cents off the pump price brings you to 3.05. Now, we encountered some of this this past year because it was kind of the same situation, and I did, um, work with QuickTrip, number of phone calls, they had a difficult time. Um, their price, their price matching that they try to do between the stations and telling it, it just doesn't work. As soon as they change a price, somebody else changes a price and they can't keep up. So we did work with us a little bit and gave us a little better discount compared to what compared to what they had bid it last year because they realized the problem that was going on. Another thing I want to point out is when Chris and I met with mechanic with 4.0 a couple of weeks ago and talked about a number of things, but buses, they are slowly converting or pretty much replacing all their diesel buses with gas buses. They are expecting nine new gas buses in their fleet here at GSL this fall. So even though the 15 cents on the diesel looks really good, our gallons are going to be switching to, they're going to be putting in more of gas. And that's where we see that, you know, the pump price is not as far off between the six cents and the eight cents compared to the six cents and 15 cents. The other thing that we've kind of done, or the board has kind of done in the past, we've sometimes gone every other year between our local companies that have bid this. In the past Speedway used to always bid, now they haven't bid for a couple of years. And so the last year or two has just been Senex and, well, QuickTrip last year was the first year they were in place. So that's our recommendation at this time, and questions?
Two years ago, we had the Colicco Co-op, and they did a great job. Our bus drivers enjoyed being able to go into there. Last year, we went with QuickTrip, I mean, they're a little cheaper. But when you look at the numbers here, it seems like the Colicco Co-op, especially with the increase in fuel not being diesel, it just seems like this is the best choice to go with this time. And we'll do this process again next year.
And I do get informed by people, you know what the pump price is today? Have you seen the pump price today? So people are watching that. And like I said, QuickTrip starts out lower, and pretty soon, Senex is lower during the day, and it's kind of a hit and miss. They did, it was a little harder for the buses to fuel up at QuickTrip compared to Senex, but they make, whatever you decide, they make work, so they do make the work. But I do ask that question to the transportation director, and how did things go? For the most part, things went well. We didn't have any problems with the invoicing. Invoicing from, the Co-op has always been very easy to work with as well. And just a reminder that we do buy all the fuel for our buses because of the agreement that we have with the contract with 4.0. Some contracts are set up, like when we used to have our Silver Lake contractors, they bought their own fuel, and that was worked into the contract piece. In this case, they don't have room for a tank down there to buy their own tank of fuel. That's a goal of ours down the road. But in this case, we have to fuel at the pump.
Those same people must, they might have one of them also.
Do they let you know?
Yeah, I talked to quite a few bus drivers. Bus drivers, they really have a tendency to watch the price. And they, on numerous occasions, have mentioned the price being at QuickTrip is usually more than at Co-op. So I'm just, that's why I support this idea. And also, I know that the price for diesel is, is even astronomical, especially with the requirements for the gas levels. So that's what we're substituting. I mean, we're switching possibly one of the areas where issues during winter time with fuel and drilling and everything, so.
Well, I think to see nine new buses fuel this fall is a good advantage for us as well. To add nine new in our fleet is always a good thing.
So, yeah, I, after talking with a few of the bus drivers, I did pay attention to the price of it would substantially something different.
Sounds good, thanks for the information. Any other questions? Hearing none, I have motion by John, second by Jason, to approve the bid for gas and diesel from Colicco Co-op. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item G, award pest control bids, action item. Two sealed bids were received from Pest Control Services on July 6. They're from Plunkett Pest Control for $2,139.40. That's a yearly cost, I believe. Michelle, these are yearly costs?
Yes, yearly, annual cost.
Annual, okay. And then one for Guardian Pest Solutions for $1,254. Both offers include a 5% discount if payment is made annually instead of monthly payments. Is recommendations of Business Manager Sander to accept the bid for pest control from Guardian Pest Solutions. Do I have a motion?
So...
Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
So...
Second by John. To approve the bid for pest control from Guardian Pest Solutions. Do I have any questions?
Just a comment, this is an area that we haven't bid for, no, I didn't look it up for sure, but probably a good 10 years. And visiting with Brady a little bit, you know, every once in a while, it's a good idea to bid, keep everybody honest, and kind of see what's out there in the market as far as interest. And we reached out to four different companies, and the two companies, as you see, are the ones that provided us the bid. So Guardian is who we clearly have worked with for a number of years, and they came in at that lower price.
I just happened to meet the Guardian individual today. When I was in, I talked to Dennis for a little bit, and he seems like a very nice young man, or middle-aged man, whatever. So hopefully we keep him around for a while.
Yeah, I know Brady said he's been a real good worker.
Yep. If anybody has any questions, they can always ask me. So I have motion by Clark, and second by John, to approve the bid for pest control from Guardian Pest Solutions. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item H, designation of official newspaper, action item enclosure number 10. Encloses a bid for McLeod Publishing Incorporated from McLeod County Chronicle to serve the district, school district's official newspaper from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. McLeod Publishing's quote is $6.25 per column inch for legal business, $8 per column inch for non-legal camera-ready business, and $9.18 for non-legal non-camera-ready. McLeod Publishing is currently providing a legal newspaper service for the school district. The quote last year was the rate of $6 for column inch for legal business, $7.75 for non-legal camera-ready business, and $9 for non-legal non-camera-ready business. Yeah, that's a lot of words, John. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? I'll make that second. To accept the bid from McLeod Publishing Incorporated in the McLeod Chronicle through June 30, 2022. Any questions?
Remember, we're required to have an official designated newspaper.
Hearing no other comments, I have motion by Alicia, second by Jason, to accept the bids. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item I, MSBA membership, action item. Is recommendation Superintendent Sanjiu to renew membership in Minnesota School Board Association. Association dues are $5,921, and the policy service, and the policy services renewal was $730 for a total of $6,651. This is based on $1,556.35 average daily membership of the students served for fiscal year 20. Last year's association dues was $5,879, and policy services renewal was $715, for a total of $6,594. Do I have a motion for, do I have a motion?
So...
Second.
Motion by Donna, second by Clark. To renew membership to Minnesota School Board Association from July 1, 21 through June 30, 22, for a total cost of $6,651, an increase of $57 from fiscal year 21. Any questions?
We renewed this, it's the School Board Association. I think it's a very important membership to be a part of. They do a great job for us. Not only does Donna and the Policy Committee work with this to be able to get those updates on the policy, but they're also a call that I make quite frequently to get some quote-unquote legal advice. It's not legal advice, but they have people that have been former attorneys. They have people that are, people that you can seek out, you know, and if you ultimately do all those calls to your attorney, now you're paying, right? And so this is well worth the dollars because it does allow you to have some resources to go to. And this membership allows you to use that instead of paying with the attorney.
Thanks, Chris. So, motion by Donna, second by Clark. To renew membership for the Minnesota State MSBA from July 1, 21 through June 30, 22, total cost of $6,651, increase of $57 for fiscal year 21. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item J, formal evaluation of superintendent in July, information only. I have got word from Directors Lutke and Bonberg, this will be honest, correct?
Yeah, I think this is something we need to talk about, maybe moving to a different month because we had it from last year. Too, with the holiday and people's going on vacations, I, as of last night, before I went to bed, I had one evaluation besides my own. So we might have to think about doing this maybe in May or June or something when people are quite busy.
One thing I talked about a little bit before you got here was possibly setting a, put a reminder in the May meeting, and then a secondary reminder in June, and then maybe we'll add it.
Not to, and whatever you guys want, whatever you guys want to do. It's just that, I mean, you know, everybody is really busy as soon as school ends. And this year was no, except, I mean, this year, I think, was absolutely ridiculous because everybody was so locked up in their homes for a year that once we were able to get out and do things, people were really busy, really busy. So it just didn't, I can't, I don't think it's fair to give an evaluation with only two evaluations. So I would really like to get more information before we do that.
And this is by no means shape or form.
No.
Any comparison to Superintendent John, would you be able?
No, not at all.
Absolutely, this has nothing to do with that. Make sure that it's crystal clear.
Exactly.
It's just, you know, it's kind of, we'll fix it.
But that's why I didn't want to go forward with it because I really wanted to give everybody a chance to, you know, give their opinions and stuff to before we did that. And it's like I said, everybody just got real busy, I think, and it just didn't happen. So I apologize.
All right, we'll move on to item K, thanks, Donna. Close-up request for 21-22, action item. Close-up coordinator Paul Luntke asked for approval of 21-22 close-up trip to Washington, D.C. Trip dates will be March 13 through the 18th of 2022. The participants in the program will cover all costs through private funds, fundraisers, or donations. Superintendent Sanjiu recommends approval of the trip. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, do I have a second?
Also.
Second by Donna. To approve close-up trip for Washington, D.C. during 21-22 school year. The dates for the trip are March 13 through the 18th of 22. Discussion, otherwise I will ask, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item L, foster care transportation, action item enclosure number 11. Superintendent Sanjiu recommends approving the foster care transportation memorandum of understanding with McLeod County Health and Human Services from July 1, 21 through June 30, 23. Do I have a motion? Motion, motion by Alicia, and a second by Clark. To approve the memorandum of understanding with McLeod County for two years.
It basically, because it's a contract that's in front of you, we have this, done this before. And it's just when there is a foster child that needs transportation and they're under the umbrella of social services through McLeod County, we work together to make that happen.
It's also a requirement with our Title I funding that you have to have this agreement in place to...
In place just in case it happens.
Yeah. And if it does happen, you know, if there's a child that rides our regular roads, there's no cost. But if it's outside the district, we incur a transportation cost, then that cost is shared into a school.
Thank you. I have a motion by Alicia, second by Clark. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item M, second reading of policies, action item. Following policies received their first reading at the June 14 School Board Meeting. Is recommendation of the Poli, Policy Committee Directors Luntke and Lutke and the Superintendent of Schools to adopt these policies. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Donna. To adopt policies listed above, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item N, resolution to accept donations, action item. Is recommendation Superintendent Sanjiu to accept donations. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Clark. To accept donations, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item O, miscellaneous, I have none at this time. Do I have a motion, or a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
And Donna, to adjourn at 8:00 P.M.